Okay, we're going to open workshop for the Joint Planning Commission, City Council, for the UGB and relook information at 6:13. And to be fair to both the Planning Commission and the City Council, I've asked that staff run the meeting, and then that way we can get our opportunity to make our comments, ask our questions, and get answers. So I'm going to turn it over to staff now.
Thank you, Chair King. So just what we kind of hope to do this evening, Steve Faust and I, we kind of just wanted to break this up into three kind of sections of a discussion this evening. Number one is, at your first work session on this, joint work session on this topic, you heard a lot of information and a lot of questions were brought out about the city's housing needs analysis, the law or the rules under which our current housing, adopted housing needs analysis, how, where it is, how it lives, what these options are, and how to work with it or not, versus the new Oregon Housing Needs Analysis system that came into place January 1 of this year, and what that potentially means for the city if it were to rethink its housing, do a new document, do need under the new system with the state. So the first part of the evening is just, we have staff from DLCD online, and they're here, Steve's going to walk through a PowerPoint presentation on the topic with DLCD here to provide additional detail or information to assist us. And then after we get through that, and kind of answer some in-the-weeds questions for you, what we wanted to do is, we heard from the Planning Commission after the first work session, that the first work session, there was so much information, the relook had to relay and express, there wasn't time for everybody's questions and comments to get out, so the Planning Commission wanted to have the opportunity to take that time. And then we just want to fully open it up to a conversation, discussion, more questions, and actually kind of have that dialogue that, but it's great to see at a joint work session, frankly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve, Mr. Faust, and you can go from there.
Thank you, Bill, and I think you'll pull up the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for inviting us to speak today, and welcome to City Councilors. Apologize, I wasn't able to make the first work session in March, but it sounds like my colleague Heather Austin covered for me admirably. And thanks to Kevin Young and Laura Kelly from DLCD for joining us tonight. They can feel free to jump in if I misspeak at all, but otherwise are here and available to answer questions when we get into a portion of the meeting. So I'll start with just a couple refresher slides. First, the history of this process, I'll go through very briefly. This all started back in 2015 with the 2035 Vision process that led to a number of documents being prepared, including the housing needs analysis, the economic opportunities analysis, and the comprehensive plan update. The UGB expansion process was initiated in 2020. During that time, the housing needs analysis was completed with the previous population forecast for 2017. In 2022, that HNA and the EOA were both updated into 2020 population forecast as required by state rules. In 2023, ordinance 490 was passed that adopted the HNA and a UGB amendment that ordinance went to referendum in 2024, and in the fall, in the spring, and in the fall, the UGB relook process was initiated. That work, the relook, was concluded in early, early this year, early 2025. Next slide. Oh, go ahead.
It's not progressing for folks online in this new setting, so I'm going to have to do it this way.
Okay.
Old school.
That's cool. Please ignore the little slides to the left and focus on the main screen.
Yes.
Okay, the Urban Growth Boundary relook process was a public engagement process designed to review the facts that led to the UGB expansion and develop a community-centered UGB expansion alternative. The relook advisory committee, which I'll just say I was very honored to work with and really gave a broad representation of folks throughout the community, they ultimately reached a year, near unanimous support for a reduced urban growth boundary expansion that still accommodates housing, parks, and a portion of the employment need by including the North, South, and East sub-areas. The relook process included four meetings of that relook advisory committee, and three community meetings, and then that first March joint work session that you took part in. Next slide, please. So this map, while a little small, represents that preferred alternative that came from the RAP, the relook advisory committee. Some of the points that folks mentioned during our final meeting in support of this alternative included a balance of jobs, housing, and parks. And I'll say, in particular, the idea of a park surrounding the reservoir to the north was attractive to many folks. They felt it was a natural extension, or provided a natural extension of residential development to the north and east. A lot of folks talked about how they wanted North Plains to control their own destiny, and there was some concern about Hillsborough and Metro kind of encroaching the city of North Plains. Folks wanted to provide opportunities for small businesses. A lot of talk about the feeling that if the city isn't growing, it's dying, and that the smaller urban growth boundary expansion is a compromise. Next slide, please. Concept planning. So North Plains has been awarded a planning grant for $230,000 from the Transportation and Growth Management Program. That's a program of the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and that is to prepare a concept plan for a UGB expansion area. Concept planning outside of metro typically takes place after the adoption of an urban growth boundary expansion. However, North Plains has been able to initiate concept planning, the concept planning process prior to a UGB expansion. Concept planning involves rigorous public engagement, data collection, and professional analysis to plan the best use of the UGB expansion area in order to meet community needs. Slides. So getting into the existing housing needs analysis, the purpose of that document is to determine how the city will accommodate housing, their housing need, consistent with that 2020 Portland State University population forecast. The projected 20-year need for units was 1,348 units. It acknowledged that vacant land in Bryn Hill, as well as some infill, would meet the need for several hundred units. The total remaining need that could, that that document estimated could not be accommodated in the current urban growth boundary is 790 units. That translates to 111 acres. That 111 acres is just the residential need. That does not include the 17, about 17 acres for right-of-way for infrastructure, or the 40 acres for parks. If you add that all together, then that's 167 acres. And that's more or less about 20% of the preferred UGB expansion that came from the RAP. Next slide, please. All right, under the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which rulemaking has been taking place for the last year-plus, and this new system, rulemaking for this new system will be completed by December 31 of this year. The purpose is to determine the state housing need and then allocate the housing need to individual cities based on a variety of factors. Cities of 10,000 or greater must develop a strategy for accommodating the need that's been allocated to them. Cities under 10,000, as I think discussed and everyone knows, are not obligated to do so. North Plains has been allocated 724 units over the next 20 years. That was through a report that was released in December 2024. Again, some of those units may be accommodated within the existing urban growth boundary, but not all units, and especially not those for the highest income quintile. Could be accommodated within the current UGB just based on the land and the zoning of the land that exists, that is, remains inside the city. Next slide, please. So these two tables show, on the left-hand side is the dwelling units from the North Plains Housing Needs Analysis and those from the new ODA program. You can see that the, and it's broken down by income strata, you can see that in the North Plains Housing Needs Analysis, there are lower counts for the lower income brackets and higher counts for the higher income brackets. If you look at the ODA side, again, there's fewer units, it's 790 compared to 724, but there's a little bit higher allocation for the lower income units and lower allocation for the higher income units. The table on the right-hand side shows the percentages, the breakdown of percentages. So you can see on the left-hand side, or I'm sorry, under the North Plains Housing Needs Analysis, 8% for 30% or below, ODA 15%, 11%, 30% to 50% medium income, 16% for the ODA, and then at the higher levels, like 80 to 120%, 22% of that allocation is shown in the HNA, 19% in the ODA, and then 46 and 38%. So there's a difference both in the total number of units, as well as how those units would be allocated to different income brackets. Next slide, please, Bill. So again, the North Plains HNA calls for 790. If we include infrastructure and parks, that's a total of 167 acres. For the ODA, there's an allocation of 724 units, but part of that rulemaking that hasn't been completed yet is how to translate those 724 units into acres. That has not, that methodology has not been determined yet. So our final slide, and just some guiding questions for this evening, for you to consider as you discuss and deliberate. You know, should North Plains plan to meet housing need? If yes, should North Plains use the current housing needs analysis or create a new, when the housing, what was called the housing needs analysis is now being called the housing capacity analysis? So should the city move forward with the current HNA or proceed under the ODA housing capacity analysis? And then should North Plains follow the relook preferred alternative, UGB alternative to balance employment with housing and parks expansion? And so per what we heard from Chair King and Bill Reed earlier, I think we want to hear from Planning Commissioners first this evening, although we certainly want to welcome comments from everyone, but since we didn't get as much of a chance previously, we're open for questions and comments, and I'm happy to, if you prefer Chair King, I'm happy to call on folks and do my best to facilitate the conversation.
I think that would be appropriate, just to call the Commissioners down the line.
Okay, we can start just going down the line if you'd like, starting with Commissioner Carr. Do you have questions or comments?
No.
Then at this time, Chair King.
I did have some comments that I wanted to put forward in the first workshop, but due to time constraints, I decided not to say anything, because I wanted to give Mayor Goodwin the opportunity to close the meeting, get to a regular meeting, because I'm a stickler for starting meetings on time, so. But I do have something I wanted to read that I put together, my thoughts, that I believe that North Plains voters voted down ordinance 490 for a full sphere of sprawl and for smart growth, but that they did not vote for no growth. I have been involved in the last two UGB campaigns, and they are time-consuming and costly. I did favor the aggressive economic expansion, as I believe it is better to ask for more and need less than ask for less and need more. I believe it is important for North Plains to capture the undesignated lands, especially east to Jackson School Road and south to Sunset Highway, and set a boundary between North Plains and Hillsborough. The city needs a 20 to 40-acre municipal park either east along Mackay Creek or north around the Lind Red War and Spillway. It is critical to both the transportation master plan and the water master plan, that efforts are made to extend Pacific Street across Mackay Creek for a looping system for both traffic and water transmission for safety and redundancy. The North Plains needs more economic growth to reduce our need to travel five miles to other destinations and to balance our tax base. There are very few parcels of land available for commercial and industrial opportunities in the current UGB. There seems to be a lot of misconceptions that the city and taxpayers pay for infrastructure. This is not true. Developers pay for infrastructure. I personally assisted a client with a six-lot subdivision, a new 460-foot street northwest, 322nd Avenue, which is a collector street connecting the end of Pacific Street to Cottis Street. The improvements cost over, my client, over a million dollars, and the city only paid $7,809 for a reimbursement to relocate a fire, an existing fire hydrant that was misplaced and would have been three feet into the street. I look forward to concept planning of any new expansion areas and revisiting our zoning code to replace our cumbersome neighborhood community zone code. I believe that employment development should utilize a regional water facility, water quality facility, instead of requiring each property owner to build separate facilities. I personally would like to see Sunset Ridge completed, eliminating dead-end streets 285th, 288th, 289th, and 290th into some transitional high-density housing before reaching a collector street or mixed-use area. I want to see more control over how fast and how much land is developed to ensure our 20-year supply will last 20 years. Growth is good for North Plains, and North Plains needs to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know I had a lot to say last time. Sorry about that. I guess, you know, I have some very similar concerns to Chair King does, as far as our expansion areas lasting the full 20 years as far as growth goes, because we've never been able to control how fast things come in and get developed. We always have these great ideas, but it seems like nothing ever pans out the way we want it. I wasn't so gung-ho for large growth. When we went through the UGB process, I had actually proposed, couldn't we do smaller amounts of acreage? But I was told by the planning staff at the time that we couldn't, we had to go for it all, so I was glad to see that that actually has changed, because, you know, I know we want a strong economic tax base for our city, but we also want our city to have a certain look and feel, so I don't want our economic areas to overshadow our nice residential community that we have up here, so. That's about all I have.
Yeah, so thanks, Mr. Faust, for your time and commitment with the RAP. My questions are mostly around that, because as council member, I want to understand them as a representative group of the community, and despite how I feel, I want to make sure I'm supporting what that represents. So number one, do you feel the members were representative of the community? And Bill might want to chime in on this a little bit. I was impressed with the group that was assembled for several reasons. Number one, I have been kind of working on different projects in North Plains since around 2015, 2016, and there were a lot of new faces for me, so that was nice. I know that staff tried to find a mix of folks who voted for the referendum or against the referendum. I believe there were some folks who were city residents and some folks who were not city residents, kind of acknowledging that while the voters are certainly North Plain residents, there's a broader North Plains community that we wanted to hear from as part of that process. So that was my experience. Bill, do you have anything to add to that composition of the RAP?
I guess the other thing I would add is, you know, we were, we were pretty deliberate about trying to get folks who didn't or couldn't vote on the referendum. Perhaps they weren't paying attention or weren't, you know, passionate enough about it to vote that may. And then we also had some folks who aren't able to, weren't able to vote, but they live here on their home, contributing members of the community, and they wanted to learn more and be part of it. So I'll be perfectly honest with you, I challenge anybody to go out and find an advisory committee on this type of topic for a town with 3,800 people in the state of Oregon. I mean, in all seriousness, you know, was it perfect? I think probably people out there would say it had, you know, it should have had more of this, it should have had less of that, but I challenge anybody to find a town with a similar issue that really didn't try more to get a wider variety of people on it.
Okay, that answers my first question, then just my second question. I think, Mr. Faust, you described the recommendation from that committee as nearly unanimous. So my question is, how many people were on the committee? And how many of those people were part of that nearly unanimous?
Yeah, we actually, well, first, how many people were on the committee?
19.
19. 19, okay, out of the 19, how many do you think were represented as, this is my recommendation?
So we went back and actually, like, we took our notes during the meeting, and then we went back to the recording to make sure that we heard, heard properly. And I would say that 16 or 17 folks pretty overtly said, we like the housing focus map, and here are the reasons why. There were a few who, it seemed, that's what they were referring to, but maybe never actually said, I support the housing focus. And then I believe there was one person who said, I really want to see a park around that reservoir, but, but did not necessarily support the housing focus.
Was there any of those 19 that overtly supported something other than that recommendation?
I think that, and Steve or Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the person who said, I want to, I'd love to see that park around the reservoir, but I don't support, I don't necessarily support the housing focus. I don't know if they gave another alternative, but I think it was clear that they were looking for less growth, but didn't, so they didn't necessarily.
Another alternative, but had an idea of an adjustment to the recommended alternative.
Yeah, something, something less than.
So then my statement based on that is, that was my understanding too, but I just wanted to clarify, but.
Yeah.
As a Planning Commission, as a member of the community, I would love to support or be able to pursue something that is consistent with that near unanimous, and it sounds like representative of the bottom.
Thank you.
I was not on the RAP committee. And I think, like, when we did the maps, and we did the, we had probably 60% of the people in that room did not live in the city of North Plains, because it was an open group. I don't know if you remember that, but there was a lot of farming community, there were a lot of, and of that, we came up with the map. It wasn't one-sided, it wasn't flooded by the city, it was more outside. And it went through, constantly was about data centers, and I don't know where people get that, because the city of Hillsborough, if you drive down Jackson, there's four data centers going in, and a distribution center, of which there is only enough power to build one. And if you hear about Forest Park coming through with a new power link, guess where it's going? Going to Hillsborough. So for us to use an excuse that data center to come, Hillsborough doesn't even have the power right now, so that, that one bothers me. But it's a great excuse for people to use to get everybody worried. My concern is industrial, commercial, on the very southern part of Jackson School. I think that's a great idea, on and off highway. And I think a lot of your new business could be out, out there away from the residential, but we also have to bring in, if we look at the last urban growth boundary, what was it in '93, probably, when they did it, 20 years? And they just, at the very end of it, Bryan Hill filled it. So they did a good job of looking at the future for 20 years. We're looking at 20 years, we're not looking at five years, we're not looking at 10 years, we're looking at 20 years of what's going to happen in this area, and if you just go out, go for a drive on Meek Road, look what's happening over there. And how fast, how aggressive the city of Hillsborough is. City of Hillsborough is 30 times bigger than the city of North Plains. City of Hillsborough has 46,000 jobs, people working in that city. They have a population of 111,000 people. So we, to protect ourselves and add that property, whether we develop it in five years, 10 years, but we protect ourselves so that as we grow, we can deem what kind of city we want, not what Hillsborough wants, not what anybody else wants, what we want and how we want the city to grow. That's my opinion.
Thank you so much.
I guess my general take on, I like everything that's toward, had to say, and I'm really big on supporting employment land into the city, supporting schools to make happen for the city. I don't have people driving 5, 10, 15, 20 miles out of the area for employment that we could possibly have right here. Supporting the housing needs for, like Tom was just saying, it's not for five or 10 or 15 years, it's 20 years, and, and we can control that growth also. It will come quick, but we need to be smart about how we grow it. We need to redress our code again to make sure we're doing the right thing. In our last, big build-out-around, Bryan Hill, we basically designed a code to give a little bit of freedom to them to be creative, and I thought we were going to get different product heads of that, and we didn't get that. Or I think we need to control things a little bit better and hope we learn what happened on the worst side. I'm for growth, I'm for smart growth, employment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go online to Commissioner Dole.
Yes. I, I was on the first committee and spent several years working on that, and so I thought we did a pretty good job trying to figure out the housing needs analysis and designing a pretty good program there. And so I was kind of surprised that everybody was up in arms about that, but I think part of the problem was that this CHIPS Act thing came into play, and everybody got the wrong impression that we were going to have Intel and all these data centers and everything else was going to come here and take over North Plains and stuff. And so I don't see a problem with the drawings, you know, that, that the new committee came up with, except for that I really kind of liked the employment stuff to be more on the west side. That way we keep all the truck traffic going down to Dersham Road and not trying to come through the cities and neighborhoods and all those kinds of things, and, and plugging up the system like that. And I thought that more of the commercial, commercial kind of businesses that, you know, malls, stores, and housing stuff would be more on the east side, you know, Jackson School area seemed a more, a little bit better for me, but I guess, you know, that, that was kind of a little better design, I thought. So, but that's all I have to say, so.
All right, thank you so much. Well, let's open it up for further discussion and dialogue amongst Commissioners and Councilors, and any Councilors who have questions, we're happy to answer questions or comments on what you've heard, or continuation of discussion from the previous work session.
I made a comment, I kind of forgot. Park are really important to me, also, I spent many years on the Park Board, and And a larger community park, I think, is extremely important for the city of North Plains. And hopefully it's in the early future also.
Thank you. Please.
Um, so in the, in the part going to looking at that, the you said that the Brin Hill area, um, was. Now that a lot of that is built out, that is included in what was the one thousand three hundred forty eight bucks, correct? So is that also the case in terms of the green light apartment housing and the thirty to sixty percent? Uh, income levels that that's accomplishing there? Was that included in that analysis too?
In the original housing needs analysis, the the North Plains housing needs analysis? I think there was, Steve or Phil.
It took into consideration the development of Brin Hill. But in terms of affordable housing project being built, that was not contemplated as part of that. At that time.
See, I'm just looking at the difference between the current HNA and then what would be required with the OHJ. And so thinking about that. Um, and I I want to say that, um, I actually looked at the relook advisory committee makeup. And I could heard people saying, no, it wasn't quite the right people or this or that, which is always very difficult when you have three thousand plus people. You know, before, um, and I sort of looked at it and said, well, what do we have here? And I want to note that there were sixty three percent were residents. And sixteen percent represented housing interest or business interest of that. And then twenty one percent represented those in the, um, sort of sphere of influence out of North Plains, out of the city itself. So to give you a sense of the makeup of the committee, now, you know, individuals, there's always the idea that certain individuals should be on or shouldn't be on. Uh, but there was that mix as well as those who vote, those who can't vote, those who voted one way or another. Um, so and and all different sides of the outlined areas. And I attended the, um. The mapping exercise with the maps on the table and at a table with. Uh, I believe a couple of residents, but also people who were not residents who were in the. As we looked at ways to reconfigure those maps. And then I also attended the sort of map. Well, I'd say vote on the maps, um, exercises. They were here as well. And so, um, you know, and saw the community participating in those. Um, one other question that I had is that, um. With the, uh. The VCLB, we're looking at the analysis. Um, I mean, what happens with it? So if we adopt, no matter what we adopt as a HNA, or if we decide we want to go back and redo that. We are then obligated to that planning, correct?
When you adopt it, yes. I think the OCD staff we've heard before that the city can rescind. Uh, that that, but once you adopt it, then yes, you are, you are obligated to meet that need.
And it's pretty clear, we have some time, some time constraints in there too, in terms of, you know, acting on that. Um, to do, to do that. Uh, and I do want to share in my conversations with that map, which is similar to the one that my table came up with, there's a little bit of differences. But it really talked about also that commercial business area being off of Jackson School Road. So that we were attracting the dollars from Hillsborough. Recognizing that, you know, I I go to the businesses downtown, they're often empty. We're not supporting them locally enough. Um, and so, you know, to be able to support, support large industry, um, we kind of need to be able to pull those dollars in. And it was a way to pull them in without infiltrating the city at the same time. So, um, I just wanted to share that as well.
Thank you so much. Other questions or comments about what we presented?
I do. I am looking for clarity on kind of our critical path or urgency on adopting HNA. Um, Steve, thank you for sending those letters. That was really helpful and great context too, going back into May twenty four. Um, I saw a couple timelines here. I, you know, on, I saw January first, twenty twenty seven. We had, um, to adopt our HNA, I think. And then there's also two new rules being instituted by twenty twenty six. I'm also aware of a TGM grant that we're kind of, we have a hole in our pocket, money book, bring it more, a hole in our pocket. Um, I'm trying to understand critical path analysis, uh, you know, is really driving some decision making. Can you guys speak to that for me?
Do you want me to take a, do you want to respond to that?
Good point.
Okay. I think you're correct for if if this city want to, city has until, um, January first, twenty twenty seven, if they want to adopt the current HNA. I think the timing is open for the ONA process because the city's. Oh, great. Let's have Kevin respond. Better, better. Kevin, please.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna stay off screen because my internet's a little, um, iffy. So, uh, just a couple of clarifications. One is that the the city has adopted the HNA. That that action, I, as I understand, has already happened. The city's not obligated to rescind it, um, because it is not, it has not yet been acknowledged. And it can't be acknowledged until the housing need gets addressed. With UGB expansion or efficiency measures. And then the county would need to agree. Once that happens, then you've got it, then you'll have an acknowledged HNA. But you can keep the HNA that you have now, um, without need to rescind it. What was the other, what was the other question in there?
Um, I was about to talk about the timing for the for ONA. Do I have any obligations around ONA?
Right. So, yeah, I mean, if if the desire is to go to utilize the new system. Then our strong recommendation is that you not initiate that work until after. The last bonk, the last bunch of rules are adopted at the end of this year, at which point we'll have a complete. You know, we'll have rules that'll explain, okay, you use the allocation, the housing allocation that comes from the state. And here's, here's how that analysis is to proceed. Um, so that's, that's our strong recommendation at this time. There the and the deadline is January first, twenty twenty seven for completing work under the current rules. So it's not just adopting the HNA, it's actually. If you're wanting to base the UGB expansion or base a UGB expansion on the HNA. That work would need to be completed along with Washington County's approval of that UGB decision. Prior to January first of twenty twenty seven.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? What's that? Uh, so with that, um, if we were. Yeah, did I hear correctly that we don't need to do anything with the HNA, the current HNA, we don't need to rescind it, do anything with it unless. Until we make the decision about what we're doing with the UGB. It can sit on a shelf while we figure that one out. Is that correct?
Uh, that's thanks for the question. That is correct. But I should also say that HNA is not, because it's not acknowledged, it cannot be used by the city to inform actions. About meeting your housing needs, because it needs to, it needs to be sort of acknowledged in order to have that legal weight. Um, but it can sit on that shelf, uh, until you decide how you want to proceed.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, at some point I'll get back to the, uh, to the grant. But if you have a question before that.
No, go ahead.
Um, I think the third part of your, maybe the third part was the timing of the TGM grant, which, um. Um, TGM grants are typically two year, a two year process. I'm sure there is, I can't remember exact. Uh, restrictions or because there's some federal funding there, we can ask ODOT for some guidance. I don't remember exactly what those timeline restrictions are, but we do have some time with that. We've started that process, just the existing conditions portion. It certainly would be useful to have, um, an urban growth, you know, a proposed or adopted urban growth boundary to do that planning. Boundary to do that planning for. Um, at the same time, the planning could could be done to inform the urban growth boundary, the final urban growth boundary. The hardest part is, or the, uh, we need, we need a bound, a boundary to plan for, whether or not that's an adopted boundary. I I think it could be either, uh, but obviously we we can, we need a boundary to plan within. We started by taking a broad brush with the existing, existing conditions, because we figured that's gonna be useful information for the city, no matter what. Um, and we're kind of paused now to looking for guidance.
That's good clarification. It can be used to inform, um, and is this only for concept planning? Or it, can you speak to the grant and kind of the parameters or the the state of play or background that we have to work within?
Yeah, um, and again, chime in if you want. It it is for concept planning. It is to identify broadly, uh, the location of land uses. Uh, the road network, parks, um. Um, you know, public facilities, um, to to look at potential funding options. I believe for for public improvements that would be needed to serve, uh, future development. That is the the purpose of the grant.
Thank you.
All right. So a quick question on the HNA slide, slide seven, I got it right. Um, it states. So cities of ten thousand or greater must develop strategy. And it says, North Plains has been assigned seven hundred twenty four. So can you, somebody, remember.
Yeah.
The assigned part, that's legal language, that's a little confusing.
Yeah, I'll look to, uh, Kevin or Laura to talk about the allocations.
Or thanks, thanks again, Stephen. You know, I should have mentioned too, we, we did provide a couple of letters. I think they're in the packet. Unfortunately, they weren't attached to the agenda, but hopefully planning commission and counselors saw those that kind of lay out this. Uh, this whole thing. So, and kudos to, uh, Laura Kelly for doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this stuff. Um. But in terms of the, the ONA, um, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Program. Every city in the state will be receiving an allocation every year of, hey, this is how many housing units. You need to meet your twenty year housing needs. Uh, so the state will be providing that information to local governments. It's only the cities over ten thousand or ten thousand or greater. Who are, uh, required to regularly update their housing capacity analyses. Uh, complete housing production strategy work. And and with that, often comes the need for urban growth boundary expansions. So those larger cities, if they find they have housing needs that they cannot address within their existing urban growth boundary. If they find that there aren't enough efficiency measures for how they can make more efficient lands within their existing urban growth boundary. Uh, then part of that work will be, uh, urban growth boundary expansions. But North Plains, because your population is below that threshold, uh, is not required or obligated. To complete the housing capacity analysis on a regular schedule or to do the, uh, housing production strategy work. You are obligated to use the ONA housing allocation numbers. If you wish to proceed with a housing capacity analysis. So if you choose to not act on this current HNA, but to wait. Uh, you'll have to work from the numbers that come out of the, the state allocation. I'm not saying that's good or bad. It's just, uh, that's how the new rules will operate.
So just as a follow up, does that mean then that we? Just, just for the sake of playing this out logically, assuming that the HNA, that we go with the OHNA and then. A future council, let's just say for my own protection, um, decides to not grow. Is the state going to force the city to grow or is that going to be a city decision? That's what I'm trying to understand. Sorry.
I see. So I, well. We encourage cities to remain current and up to date on understanding and addressing their housing needs. But, uh, to put it simply, the smaller cities are not under an obligation to do that work on any particular schedule. So, uh, if the city moved forward with an updated housing capacity analysis. Uh, and identified a need for UGB expansion, they would need to, under current law, they would need to. Address that deficit with either land use efficiency measures or UGB expansion or both. Concurrent with adoption of that housing capacity analysis. But that doesn't mean you're required to do the UGB. It just means, well, why did we do all that work on the HCA? If we can't adopt it and use it as a basis for how how we meet our housing needs over time.
Okay. And then one quick follow up, sorry, on the letters you sent on option two, I read both sides. I'm just trying to make sure I have this right. It appears, uh, in June twenty twenty four, there's a twenty four, or sorry, twenty one percent reduction. Uh, from the previous. So does that mean theoretically the seven ninety four would become six? Six something. Sorry, I can't read my writing. I did the math, but I can't read my writing. Six hundred and something. It'd be twenty one percent less than the seven ninety four. Is that what I'm understanding from the twenty one percent reduction? If it were to be re. Whatever, if we read it, they HNA, or if we reduce HNA.
Oh, I see. Um, okay. So that's a more complicated question, because you're putting together both the employment land need and the housing land need. So this is a, I guess, what, what, what that number is, is the difference between the ONA allocation number. And the, the existing one that you have from your HNA. So it's a twenty one percent reduction in the housing land need. It's not a twenty one percent reduction in the total need. So it would, it would be twenty one percent of hundred and sixty seven acres or somewhere in that realm. It wouldn't be twenty one percent of, what is it, seven hundred, eight hundred, some odd, the total, uh, amount of acres. I'm sorry, go ahead, Laura. It sounds like you can probably say that more clearly than I.
Yeah, just rereading the letter from, this is from the July twenty twenty four letter. And it talks about, it it's talking about the PSU population forecast, um, that, yeah, that was. In effect in June twenty twenty four, um, which has had a twenty one percent reduction from the basis for the, uh, the city's adopted. HNA. And so there, there's that twenty one percent difference is representing the difference between the population forecasts in twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty. Um, and so I think, I think the, the question then that's being asked is, is whether these numbers that are on this slide. Get a twenty one percent reduction were, were the city to undertake a new housing capacity analysis. And the answer to that is, is laid out in the, the second letter, which is, is saying that, uh, the city is no longer. If it were, if it were to undertake a new HCA, you know, starting, starting, you know, now. If the city wanted to take, undertake a new HCA, it would, it would not use the PSU population forecast at all directly. It would use that assigned number that comes directly from the state. And that number is assigned in January of every year. And whatever year the, the city decided to undertake a new HCA, it would use that allocation that's, that's assigned to them. In that year that, uh, that they're adopting their HCA. So you're no longer using that PSU population forecast. And this twenty one percent reduction isn't really relevant. And and so that's the reason that we, uh, provided that second letter is to kind of explain that. That the, the instructions that were in that option two are really kind of replaced now by this ONA system that that requires something else.
Thank you.
Clears mud.
Yeah, I want to follow up on that, that same area. Uh, just assuming, I know that the state doesn't have the, all the rules and everything in place yet. But going from our HCA to the OHNA, uh, we can assume that that would mean they would out. Even though they allocate the number of units, they will say you need to do it on less land and increase density. Unless, is that correct?
Well, again, I I think you're exactly right. We don't have the rules, uh, that, that, that describe exactly what the city is to do with this allocation. So we don't know how that all get, how that all plays out. And I think, uh, the slide that Steve showed earlier kind of, kind of shows that there's, there's a, a question mark about what. How to translate that into, into the land area. So unfortunately, we, we don't have any guidance on that now. Which is part of the reason why the, the state says, we really recommend you don't even start this work until twenty twenty six. When we not only have the rules adopted, but we also have some guidance for you to help you better understand how to, how to do these. Uh, how to, how to use this new ONA program.
Eric King, I think you can look at the allocation by income level though, and maybe make some assumptions about what. You know, what subsidies might have been included with the HNA versus what might be included. Under the ONA program without knowing the specifics at all at this point.
But more than likely.
But more than likely, it'll be a higher density than what we currently are looking at.
If I might. I'm gonna be a good economist and shift from demand to supply, and that's supply of land. So with a new, with a new, with a new housing needs analysis or H C A and the new system, we would also have to read to do a new buildable lands inventory of what we have inside the current U G B. And even though under the new H, under a new H C A, you would have this reduced population and housing need, demands, demand part of the equation. When we update our buildable lands inventory, it would, we will have nothing. The old H and A had all the brinhill land vacant. And so if we redid things and did a new H C A, the new buildable lands inventory for our current U G B will have very, very little land capacity. So the net difference is not very, isn't much. Because even though the pop, the population, the housing need forecast is smaller by a certain amount, we don't have any land within to accommodate really much of all, much of it at all. So I'm not saying it's a wash between the two. But it, you know, don't, please, please don't factor, do factor in the fact that we don't have anything left if we, with a new buildable lands inventory to accommodate even a, even a smaller forecast, I guess.
Maybe I can add a little bit to, to, we, we did an updated buildable lands inventory to see what we have here in the city. And for all the different zoning districts in the city, residential of all types, commercial, industrial, and N C zone land, we have a total of 39.22 acres. When you go to residential, it equates to 8.65 acres. When you go to industrial land, and this includes both heavy industrial and light industrial, we have approximately 15.95 acres. When far west goes in, that's a 10-acre lot. That comes down then to about five acres of industrial land available in the city. And the next largest quantity of industrial land is located over off the street that Stuart was referencing earlier, 22nd and Cottage. There's three lots there that are sunlight industrial, two of them are about 1.73 acres, and the other one's closer to an acre. The only other industrial land available in the city is located in the southeast corner over by Recollaging. And that's about a two-acre skinny narrow lot. That probably would be best for being attached to the lot that's to the west of it and being utilized for that project, that current development there. That's it. That is, that is it. All the residential land is just pocket lots, kind of scattered around, except for the six lots over at 322nd and Pacific, where there's six new lots. The only real viable commercial land remaining in the city is the G O A of five acres. And the total commercial land is 13.69. So again, you pull that five plus acres out, and you don't have a whole lot remaining. One of the things we've discussed about how to service some of those things was one of the ideas that Chair King mentioned earlier, which is perhaps trying to purchase that lot next to King Tora and turning that lot, portion of that lot into a regional water quality facility. So some of those other lots, like at Cottage and Glencoe, and at Commercial and Glencoe, could develop to their full potential, because they wouldn't have to put water quality onto those lots. And they could just send it down to this regional facility, right, that could accommodate possibly the G O A property and these other two properties. We could also probably tie in, we could also tie in King Tora and the property immediately just south of that. They could all gravity into that easily. And that would just be in order of working with these property owners and working with your engineer staff to do some calculations and come up with some rough proportionality and selling that to the other property owners as a way to maximize the build of their land. But as you can see, the map, there's, there's really no real land available in the city limits for any significant type of development.
Thanks, Steve. We had a comment here and then.
So I'd like to get back to the the question you asked originally of O H and A or H and A. And so maybe, yeah, this one right here. So I think leveling up what those said, which is, hey, the total amount is going to be roughly equivalent when you factor in the billable lots available after, after burnout. So really, what we're talking about is the difference in income level allocation. So if I, i- is there anyone that can answer for our current city? Does our current city look more like the mix of income on the H and A side, or does it look more like the O H and A? So what I'm trying to get at is which one would keep the city similar to what it is, and which one would change it?
The city is currently closer to the H and A analysis and not the ONA.
Okay, so if we went with the ONA, we would be moving the city away from its current state.
In a new direction.
In a new direction. Okay. And then lower income direction and a higher density likely direction.
You, you, you would have to probably have more high-density housing or middle housing to hit some of those benchmarks that the state has identified.
Okay, but the 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 lower two categories are the ones where the difference is, it it moves it from the upper to the lower, and ours currently looks like H and A.
That's correct. So when you do a U G B expansion with the ONA, you will probably be zoning more land high density and less low density to to get that type of balance.
There are different ways to accommodate lower income housing, you know, manufactured home parks is another way. So I don't want to say 100% that it would be higher density, because there are.
The population would shift away from what we are today. If we did our job right, if we chose O H and A, or if we chose ONA, and we did it properly, we would shift our population away from the mix we have today into a new mix.
Yes, and you know, part of the ONA program, you know, when when you go that route is doing reporting on that on those benchmarks that they have set, you know, and so they are trying to make sure that you're hitting those targets. And if you're not, they they're going to want to know why and what they can do to help make that happen better, you know. And so it'll be certainly, I don't want to say scrutinized more, but you know, when you come up with your future conceptual planning, if you go with the ONA, I'm sure the state will look very closely at how you're putting that zoning back to make sure that you can reach those objectives.
So I think, Mr. Faust, the answer to your question, I would love to hear from council members and others as to, do they want the city to change? Or do they want the city to remain similar to the nature that we have today? And then that kind of informs the answer to your question of which do we gravitate to? So I'd love to hear from others.
Thanks for that. I would just add that I think the ONA, you know, housing needs change over time. Our our socioeconomics have changed dramatically over the past 10 years. And so I think the ONA tries to accurately reflect the housing need of 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 North Plains. Counselor, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of them. So I, I, there's also the talk I've heard about, you know, not expanding the boundary at all, growing where we are, recognizing we have these spaces. So when I think of that, I think 20 years out from living in other cities, to me, that is replacing housing with apartment housing or low-income affordable housing to try to add more units or or putting in ADUs through lots of backyards or, you know, so it does change the the environment, so to speak, if we don't move outside of our boundary at all, and we still are trying to accommodate any housing whatsoever. And so I'm not sure. So there there's sort of that idea that, well, we don't need to go outside of there because we have this area that's undeveloped. We think we don't have, you know, business stuff all together and that sort of thing. But we're also trying to see 20 years out, not in the next three to five. So my other question is, with the concept planning that can go forward, so like I said, I I mentioned before, you know, we all kind of approach those things differently. And some people need to know where the boundary is, like figure out where to put the chairs on the deck. Other people need to get the chairs so they can build the deck to fit these great chairs. And so we're kind of in that, which one comes first? With the focus of that industrial area, is there a way, in terms of that concept thing, for the community to look at how that rolls out? So is the, is the city's focus more on the commercial industrial building that first and then the housing? Or, you know, it's like, I'm just curious if that's part of the concept planning to look at it over time, right?
But that's last part of your question is a little tricky, because that's trying to get into kind of manipulating the growth pattern a little bit. And so if the city were to grow into the southeast over here, as Chair King mentioned, we have a lot of existing utilities and roads stubbed out through the Sunset Ridge project that would help facilitate the extension of facilities out into that land. But that land, really adjacent to where that existing, those existing utilities are, won't be your heavy industrial land. That'll be further to the south. In order to try and maybe move something down there a little bit quicker, so it doesn't have to wait for all those utilities to come down in a growth pattern, it would probably be where the city would go work with the state to see if there is a way to get some dollars to move facilities, some some sewer, water, and power down to the southeast quadrant of that area to help spur some economic development in that region. Otherwise, it would be a wait kind of process until it got down there. Or they could do some type of improvement district, right, where somebody could bear the whole cost of bringing that down, and they can get reimbursed over a 10-year period as other lots or beneficiaries of that come in and reimburse them. But people don't like taking that risk of extending that at their cost and getting reimbursed, because people could just wait, right? And then they're out of it, and they get the free utility. And so I would imagine if there was, if we were going to try and jumpstart both residential and economic development land growth over in that southeast quadrant, there would probably have to be some state dollars involved to help move the infrastructure to those lower areas of that quadrant.
Just curious on, on sort of the way.
Let me bring up a couple of things, too. One is, I know that in our last urban growth expansion, the state required a 8.4 units per acre. And this, this last go around now, they kind of backed off from that high density. And I mean, high density is great, but without mass transportation, that everybody's got to have a car, and that takes more land. And so, I mean, I be great to be a higher density, but until we get the transportation to be able to handle it, that just puts more burden on everyone else. So that, and then the other thing is, was I mentioned about Pacific Street going across Mackay Creek. I envisioned that being a collector that goes across to Jackson School Road, and that's where your main arterial for your sewer, water, and power and those kind of things to get it over there. And maybe there's a project to put that main road in there first, and then that way it can branch off both north and south to those properties.
Does with the concept planning, could help in there, Brian, in terms of how that all comes together? When I worked at the city of Ben, you know, there were some large infrastructure projects that had to be done for development over in that area. And one of the things we did is we took a large area and identified who would benefit from that the most, right? And so as the development came along, there was a major intersection that was going to have to be improved. And we didn't want to put that burden on the last one in, right? We wanted everybody that was going to come in to pay their proportionate share towards that ultimate intersection fix. And so we we did that. We identified this area. We put together a proposal to council that said, as these lots come in, each person needs to pay a proportionate share towards this alternate fix. And then the city will be collecting S D C dollars and other dollars to come in to help finalize that that improvement. And it worked quite well. And I would imagine that North Plains would probably have to do something similar. And so you might see the extension of Pacific start from east to west. So you could collect those dollars from that development over time, because that infrastructure to go across the Cape Creek, I'm sure will not be cheap. It is a large span, because you've got all the wetlands and everything that you have to get over before you land back into areas where outside of the floodright now. And so there's certainly ways to do it, but you can't do anything until you have the land, and then you can start working with that to identify the solution to the problem.
Please.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. We've been here. I just have a a couple of questions, just to help me understand some kind of spider webbing into Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. So first question is regarding the current T G M grant that we have. If we do not adopt the H, the current H and A, that T G M grant is kind of voided at that point, is that correct? Or we could still use it for ONA?
Can, yeah, the the T G M grant is kind of independent of the the H and A or a or a ONA housing capacity analysis. So would you say it that way? They're not unrelated.
They're not related. I, I think the issue with, I think in, in, if Glenn is on, we're still on, we can elaborate from O dot, but we're kind, we are at a stage, there is Glenn. Feel free to chime in.
I hear there's no Glenn is here. Can you hear me? Yes, yes.
Yeah, all right. I'm, I'm in a t-shirt, because I'm cooking dinner, but I'm not all dressed up at work. But no, you're, you're absolutely right, Steve. This is a separate process. You know, our our goal with the T G M program is to help communities do, you know, quality planning based on community values and provide good housing opportunities, economic development, chip, trip reductions, or, you know, choices, all that good stuff. You can plan for lands, like inside the boundary, outside the boundary. This, you know, this particular grant is not constrained by the H and A, the economic upgrades analysis. It's, hey, we wanted to help the city. We did a downtown plan with you guys. It was really great. You're trying to do this good stuff. We wanted to help you take advantage of the resources that we have to to help the community well. So you can move forward with that planning with or without a boundary. Ultimately, you decide if annex lands into the city. And I think, you know, I think what Steve was mentioning is, you know, that planning work, that community engagement can help you decide which things you like, which things you don't like. If there's things that should go off the table, things that should go on the table, that's really up to you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you. A couple other questions. So again, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, if we do not adopt the H and A, or, you know, go forward with the H and A, and we move forward with the ONA, and every year, in theory, the state would provide those population numbers, because we're a city under 10,000, we would not be required to update that plan yearly, but maybe when the need is present, is that correct? I'm just thinking about the the cost basis yearly to a small city, if we did have to update that yearly.
So and Kevin, oh, Laura, you can just say.
Yeah, I can, I can help with this. So the the state allocates those numbers on an annual basis so that they're available for when a a city wants to undertake a a housing capacity analysis, H C A, or when they're required to, if they're over 10,000 in in population. So those numbers, although they get updated annually, they're, they're only applicable, they're, they're only, they only come into play if the city is undertaking an H C A. So if you were to say, you know, start next year on an H C A, you would use the numbers that were provided to you in January of that year. And then and that those, that H C A is valid, and there's no updating that's needed until the next time the city wants to undertake a a new H C A, whenever that is, or it reaches 10,000 in in population, whenever that happens, that's the only time those numbers would would come back into into play.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. I think just the last thing, I'll, I'll chime in, just my, my sentiments. You know, I mentioned this during the last relit committee meeting, that I I do feel strongly that we should adopt as much residential on the east side as close to the new elementary school that is not at capacity. Just thinking about walkability, right, that it can have so many positive impacts for walking, reduce emissions from school buses, et cetera, et cetera. The other part I would also encourage just this, this group to consider is this is 20 years, and I think, I think it's a mixed bag, right? And personally, I don't even know what I'm going to have for dinner tomorrow, let alone like 20 years from now, right? So it's, it's a very long runway, and I really want to be controlled with our growth. I want to have a balance, but I also think about 20 years from now. Financially, can the city sustain on the current tax base that we have? And that is the part that I am consistently trying to balance, right, of residential is great. Of residential is great, but also we need to be diverse with that mixture and, and provide a diverse tax base as well.
I can just share something with you to try and give you guys an idea of what 700-plus dwelling units kind of looks like and the time to build that out, what that is approximately. Sunset Ridge got started around 2005-ish, right? Coming into the city and doing all that stuff to make Sunset Ridge happen. Sunset Ridge has about 270-ish dwelling units in it, maybe 280. Green Hill came in after that, and now we're in 2025, right? That's a 20-year period. And Green Hill has 500 dwelling units. So between those two developments, you have 700-plus dwelling units. And I bet, and I haven't calculated the acreage, but I'm happy to do that for you, but I bet you would find that the acreage in both of these totals probably what you're looking at to accommodate a 20-year growth supply. So you have existing examples to rely upon to show you what a 20-year build-out of residential land could look like and what that density could look like. You have it right now, and it took 20 years to build.
Both expansion areas are about 75 acres and one of them has five acres for the school, so that's 20. So you're looking at a very similar number. The other thing is, as Counselor Peepin was saying, you know, this 20 years, but we started in 2015. You know, we're already 10 years, talking about 20 years. And so, and we aren't at that 20 years because it's still going to take a while to get there, so. And it's a long process.
It takes a long time.
That's why I don't want to just say, let's not do anything, because it takes a long time and a lot of energy to do it. And if we've already done a lot of the work, let's consider that.
In, in your example, that appears to more represent the HNA version. That 700, that 20-year example looks more like the.
That's correct. That's correct.
That is the eight-point-four units per acre.
That's correct. Okay. Other questions or comments? Wanted to just bring us back to the guiding questions and maybe elaborate a little bit as well. I think an obvious decision to be made is, is does North Plains want to accommodate some housing need one way or the other? Is that important to this community to provide more housing for, for future residents, for future growth? And then that third question, should North Plains follow the re-look preferred alternative? I would just add to that, is there more information that staff or our team can provide to help you with any of these questions, really? But that third one in particular, we talked about, you know, the role of the concept plan. But I don't know what people are, are looking for out of that concept planning. There's a lot of information that we can provide, potentially provide to you today in terms of, depending on what your questions are. So I'd just add that to those questions is, is there information that we haven't provided that, that would help you answer some of these questions?
Can, can you paint a picture of what that kind of concept planning would be? Like if we, if we're saying, not necessarily what we would get or what we would do, but, you know, what's, what's the picture? What's it look like if we move forward with that?
Well, we, we certainly could, I mean, if, if you want to see an end product, there's plenty of examples from throughout the region or the state. No, that's not what you're asking.
No, I'm saying what, the pieces, the process.
The process?
Yeah.
There is a scope of work. I don't know if that's been shared. It starts with existing conditions, looking at kind of what, from a, from a, you know, what's on, in the study area today. How is it served with utilities, or would it be served, is it currently served with utilities? What, what are current land uses, et cetera? That's the, that's the first phase. There would be some sort of, there would be two committees. I can't remember the names for sure, but a technical advisory committee and a community advisory committee that would meet several times throughout the process. There would be public meetings as well to engage the broader community. After existing conditions and looking at the different opportunities and constraints, you move to an alternative stage where you prepare probably up to three alternatives, I'm guessing. I don't remember the numbers exactly. You then bring that out to the community, and the community gives their, what they like and what they don't like. A little bit similar to what we did with the re-look. And then you move to a preferred alternative. And again, that preferred alternative would show land uses, a transportation network, parks. It could show, yeah, land uses by comprehensive plan designation. There would be an element of that where we have a economic development consultant who would look at funding sources and potentially phasing as well. All of this at a, at a concept plan level, but those are all the things that would be included. And then there would be recommendations for next steps, likely in terms of what are some updates to the comprehensive plan and the, and the development code that would need to be, to, to implement.
Thank you. That's helpful.
What timeline would we need to get all this done if we needed to maximize the grant opportunity?
I think we set out at the beginning, we estimated a schedule of about a year to do the planning work. I don't know, I haven't looked and updated the schedule recently, but.
Is there like a use it or lose it situation?
Let's go back to Glenn for that, yeah. Go ahead, Glenn.
Thanks, Steve. And I did introduce myself. I'm Glenn Boland with ODOT. Some of you have met me because I was out there with the downtown plan, but I'm the, the local administrator for the grant program. We do have, we use federal money for these, and so there is a drop dead use it or lose it date by end of June of 2026.
So we can meet that, we can meet that time, time. We can certainly.
And then we could potentially meet the HNA timeline of January 1st, 2027, then to.
Yeah, I think I would just ask, certainly having a boundary helps us with our planning effort. It's not critical. So the question would be what, which I said before, kind of if, if you think you would like to do it in that order, the concept plan, and then make a decision on the HNA, just, I want to be clear about what information you're looking for from the concept plan and make sure that we do have to wait for the concept plan, or if there's information we can provide you that would help that decision-making now.
Because I just want to remind you, you know, that, that drop-in date there, you have, have, the whole UGB package has to be all the way through the city and through the county and through the state to be able to utilize that. So there's some work.
It's a lot of work.
Lot of work. And then I'll just make one more comment. I appreciate you clarifying that you wanted to hear about the process. Because if you would like to see a concept plan, a jurisdiction in this region that recently completed one, it should would. And we have that, and I'm happy to share it with you, but it would show you what the end package would look like, if you'd like to see that. But they're the most recent jurisdiction that's done anything in this, in this area.
So state and federal dollars have come up a couple of times. We all know where the federal dollars are going. And we all know that the state and the county are cutting because of budget deficit. So what is our risk? Like, how exposed are we if we start down this process and suddenly state or county or state comes go?
Well, I think the, the TGM grant is locked in, and Glenn can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Beyond that, then what? I, I guess that, that's what I'm looking at, what, what, whatever direction we go, how do we mitigate any potential risk?
Well, so Counselor Dumber, I guess what I would say is from, from the planning grant standpoint, lock-in's probably a good way to put it. Once we have a plan in place, we're going through the process, you know, city process, county process with the state. The, the funding that comes up after that, the funding issue that comes up after that is we have an infrastructure plan and we need to work with the state on, you know, mainly on kind of the big dollar mainline infrastructure that we may have to build. That's the state level. That's not federal. And we were really, we were actually rather deliberate in our kind of planning of different industry need as well as housing to maximize the chance for the state to participate with us in, like, you know, we were pretty key about what targeted industries. For instance, if you look at the targeted industries and the land need that we, we've identified in the DOA, the focus is on the traded sectors that business Oregon and the state prioritize. So we're not chasing anything and everything. We're very specifically planning on the things that maximize our chances of, of participation for infrastructure finance with the state. But, but after we go through the planning process, it really gets down to if we need to participate with some, with, you know, agencies, it's state or joint water commission or, you know, what, what have you, but it's not federal. It's not federal like it is, you know, the money with the planning.
Please. I, I just, um, I also want to be respectful of the, the formation of the re-look committee and how that process came to be, and that went through the community and through council, as well as the process that was approved. You know, so that we are at the point where we are having our joint session to look at the, joint work session to look at that recommendation from the re-look committee. So before we can really answer some of these questions, I feel like we need, this is me personally. I feel like we need to honor what that process was. And the next step in the process really is to ask the planning commission to make the recommendation to council of what you think in terms of that re-look, rather than us usurping that as a council. And I felt strongly that that's the job of the, of the planning commission. It was also the job of the re-look to do that for you. So I don't know how others feel about that, but I do feel that there's been some efforts to try to get rid of all the things so that we aren't looking at any of that. But we've heard a lot here tonight, a lot of useful information to take in. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting with that, and I don't know how the council speaks.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Sorry. I have a question on that, and I think it was Commissioner Labonte, if I'm right, in one of the planning mission meetings, asked a question. I wanted to follow up and get more input. What was something about if we adopt the recommended map, are we held to, industrial has to be here, something like that. I think you would ask that question. And so it basically, what I'm getting is, if we adopt the boundary, are we held to yellow, blue, and whatever the other color was?
It wasn't if we adopt the boundary, it's if we can still massage the boundary.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, because there's some areas that I would personally like to see tweaked. It's not obviously going to be my sole decision.
Right.
Yeah, it was just, yes, the re-look committee did a lot of work on it, but there's still room for massaging that boundary on the proposed map.
And I was kind of curious to get more, like, more information.
Yeah, I was just saying, as far as the blues and the yellows, what that signifies is really just where the different uses scored the best in the goal 14. Like, when, when you go through the process of looking, looking at the land and where it could possibly go, you know, what's, what areas are most suitable for the nature of the uses you're looking at?
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I have mixed feelings about us even painting the colors on the map because it gets, it, it kind of goes too far down the path of concern, as Commissioner Labonte expressed this. The intent here isn't to say it's going here. It's just, it, it, it scores the best. It makes the most sense to, to probably go in these areas, but yeah, there's room for massaging. We have, we have employment land identified as scoring, as for example, as scoring the highest immediately south of and running up to Sunset Ridge from the south. Well, do we want to, do we actually want to have employment going all the way right up against the houses and the school? Probably not, but the idea is, this is where it scored best, but there's room to, to work with that.
And then just as a follow-up, just for, sorry, no, just, just why I'm, I'm just trying to, I assume that's planning commission kind of generally recommends that, and then at some point council adopts based on the recommendation roughly that.
So it's a really, you know, getting back to Commissioner or Council Walls. Yes, you're correct. If we were to go forward, it would start with the planning commission. But I think the planning commission and staff would want to have some assurances that the city council is supporting that effort, right? They don't want to go through that whole effort and make a recommendation and come and bring that to you and it dies out, right? So they would want to have some type of clarity from council to go forward on that, right? And then if that was the direction, and maybe the direction would be to start with this map perhaps, right? So we would bring that map into the planning mission and start kicking that around and send that through public meetings, right? And get input on that and provide information to people, you know? And then we would get a recommendation from the planning commission to move forward to the city council. And then the city council would hold their public meetings on that. Maybe it's one, maybe it's five, you know, until you guys are comfortable that you've got enough input. And then you would adopt something, right? And then that package would move forward to the county. And the county is kind of there to just do checks and balances more than anything else. Did they get the HNA right? Did they get this right? Are things generally following the state laws and are they in the right areas, right? They're not criticizing that, where the uses are going, just did they do the boundary analysis correctly, you know? And if they agree with that, then they're going to move it over to their, to the commissioners with a recommendation of approval. And then the commissioners would move that to DLCD. And so to get this thing moving again, that would kind of be the effort that would be required. But I think to kick it off, the directive comes from the electives, and then the process starts with the volunteers.
If I may just kind of respond to Council President's question, and hopefully this helps everyone. There are a, a lot of decisions, as I think Steve's summary there suggested. The first decision is if you decide to go ahead and entertain the notion of a growth boundary expansion, you'll get a recommendation from the planning mission, you know, which you can follow, not follow, adjust. But the decision to adopt an urban growth, newer growth boundary is just that. It's the line on the slide there without any colors, without any colors. Once that gets, again, the county has to amend its map to reflect the city's new mass, it all has to get acknowledged by the state. Then the second decision is what colors do you want for that map and where? Where do you want your employment land? Where are you going to residential? That decision then has to be timed, be adopted, become final and stand up on field. Then you get to the zoning, okay? You've got your, you know, your residential complaint designations over here. How much? But it's low density, medium density, high density. So first you have to, the first decision is establishing a map. The second decision is the comprehensive plan designation. The third decision is the zoning. Each of those is sequential and each takes months at least, probably years, before you get anything that looks like it's only bad. And only then can people come in and start, you know, thinking about coming here. It's going to, even if you amended it, the urban growth boundary again this year, it would probably be 20, 30 before anybody starts coming here. Oh, just so you understand the procedures, that if you agree to a UGB expansion, that's just the first in a long line of decisions that the council would have to make.
Efficiently, people would need to, to sell their land or, or give that, you know, make that available.
That's exactly.
That's not required either. So I think that's important. Some people think it's taking it. It's not, it's not required.
No, if you, yeah, that's exactly right. Development is all voluntary.
I'm just saying that for public.
And frankly, one of the decisions I left out is the city would have to annex that property, right? And people don't have to annex into the city if they don't want to. So even if you expand the urban growth boundary and apply your colors to the map, that doesn't mean anything unless people want to annex into the city. And I have no clue what the willingness is for people to, if people want to continue farming, they'll continue farming. So I want to pay city taxes, they won't have.
Thank you. I actually forgot the original questions. But, you know, I think I would love to kind of go through the room and individually, you know, maybe just share our thoughts of these three questions right on that last slide of should we plan to meet the housing need, right? Maybe we can start with council and then planning commission can share. Because I think this is like a really great opportunity for two-way dialogue. Maybe we can share the thought process of where, you know, we're kind of landing and you can share your, your thoughts or concerns or, you know, acknowledge or agree. So I'll, I'll pause there, like, does that feel, how does that feel for everyone if we were to just kind of go through and, and share our consensus?
Does anyone have concerns with that?
Oh, I don't have any concerns with that. I just did want to bring up that I was involved with the original process, which was a lengthy process, and I had problems with the colors too, because I didn't want inductive commercial ground up next to the school. I didn't want it next to the Sunset Ridge that wasn't completed. And I was told those are just to show you. And I was told those are just to show you a acreage, you know, not, it's not written in stone, if that's what's going to there. And again, it's this line that we are talking about, you know? Now, that's important, but we need to establish some line before we can, if we're going to, then to move forward. So I was more excited about the moving forward than, I guess, worrying about making sure that the right residential wins the place. And so that's when they talked about the D G M grant. I was very excited about doing actually planning because we're the planning commission, but we react to applications because we don't plan for them to come because we have a planner, you know? So for us to actually plan something, that was, I thought it was going to be a great idea.
Thanks. Thanks for that checking. I think that's exactly right. Those, the the colors are there to help conceptualize the boundary, right? To your question, Commissioner Labonte, the the boundary can be massaged, right? That most definitely.
Not the colors, the boundary.
And I just say there's going to be a lot of refining those rough edges that are out there right now and realigning different things, so.
And the other thing I would add about the boundaries is that I would assume that we would talk to everybody that were considering and if they don't want to come in, then why bring them in, you know? So why waste our time if they don't want to come in? But I think there was a pretty good consensus, except for maybe to the south, that most everybody was on board with what we had proposed.
All right, if you want to kick us off, council paper, I think we, I didn't hear any objections to your proposal.
Okay, so question number one, should North Plains plan to meet housing need? I had the opportunity to attend the last real committee meeting and I think the consensus I gathered from that meeting was yes, to continue on with housing need. Number two, if yes, should North Plains use the current H and A? I think there's like a black hot helicopter going over right now, sorry. Or the new H C A under the owner rules. My preference, I gathered again based off of the feedback I've heard from other residents, but also knowing I haven't talked to three thousand plus people, would be to keep the current H and A. And then the last question, should North Plains follow the relook recommendation to balance employment with housing and parks expansion? I would also say yes, we should follow the consensus of the relook committee. I think there was a lot of time, effort, planning both from staff and from residents and and members of the RAC. But that that weighs very heavily in my mind for moving forward with with the proposed proposal ahead.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah, so I'm not convinced that we have a housing need. I think that's part of the problem is there is a soon need. The question is, why do we have, why, why do we need people? I understand tax base, I understand those things. It's a question of what do we want the city to look like in twenty years? And I I came into this with an open mind and I still have made up my mind completely, but that's what I'm struggling with is do, you know, it it seems, it seems like this, the citizens would like to remain a small town. If we add that many houses, we're rapidly approaching ten thousand in twenty years, which puts us in a different area. Something else that came out a lot with the people in the city is that they don't want to be part of metro. And I think that's a big risk as we grow is we get a lot more traffic to metro. And I'm personally moved out of metro, no, that's people in metro, I just don't want to be part of it. I'm sure it's great for somebody, for me. So I would say I I'm undecided still and I need to go take a very long walk and process a lot of information because I don't have an answer and that's why I committed to people when I came in here. And I still am open-minded, but I just, I can't say for certain that we actually need to grow. Because need is a very tricky thing to me. If we do go with that, again, I'm not really a hundred percent convinced either way on the H and A versus the O H N A. I think there's benefits to both. But again, we just took in tons of data and I like to take time, since nothing's on fire. I like to take some time and think it through. Generally, I would want to say the H and A would be better, but I would for a smaller version of it, which if I understand correctly, we could potentially work that. But I, again, I'm not convinced yet either direction and I think I need more understanding until somebody tells me we have to do something and then I'll just make the best decision, hopefully. And finally, I had, the thing that concerns me personally and has concerns of people that, you know, in the community that I've spoken with, not everyone, but you know, some is a lot of the relook involves farmland. I grew up in a farm family and down between Albany, go down to Jackson City. And my family farm, most of all, needs Eugene for a couple of generations. So I, it is hard for me to see farmland get built. This is me personally, it's other people I thought. So I'm just sharing, that's just where I come from personally. I grew very, you know, private to the land. So it's hard for me to say yes. I'm also struggling with the parks thing. I love parks a lot. But the question is, and I was at a bunch of the relook meetings, I'm trying to determine how we balance that need with the cost. Because I know just developers pay for everything, but at some point the city has to cover with the tax base and that's so when I look at long-term planning, I think about fifty, a hundred years out, what are we leaving? Like, have we left the world a better place than we found? And again, that's why I don't have answers. It's like, having been able to fully rationalize that. I think there's risk there and that's why I'm a little cautious. So I guess my answer is I don't have a good answer and if I was forced to vote today, I don't think I'd be the best decision. Sorry.
I'm just curious, what is, what is the population per housing that's in this projected number? So when I ask that because, as I said, number I had mentioned, if we adopt the H and A, we would be getting closer to that ten thousand population. So is it two per household, two point five, three? Is there official number?
Two point six, two point seven and a full build out under the H and A, it's it's under seventy five hundred people.
Thank you.
I think that we should plan to meet the housing. Part of the reason I think that is I think that we should be thinking about how North Plains will grow. What does it look like? Because I'm not sure that this is a sustainable city as it is now. In terms of even the growth coming in, you know, it's pretty tight, how to how to sustain that. So the ways to do that are going to be profit to not grow, property owners are going to pay more, I think, in taxes and lettings and other ways to support the city itself. So I think that if we're looking down the road, what does that look like? First, and and the growth is happening, you know, over the entire state and the nation and the world. Frankly, you know, our population has changed. This isn't nineteen seventy and this isn't the second hundred person town anymore. So I guess my a concern with it is how do we do that? What does that look like? How do we maintain the concept of the small town within that process? So can you be a small town at seventy five hundred, you know, just like you are at thirty eight hundred? So but I feel like if we don't do it, if we don't put the houses there, someone else will. So that's kind of my thinking about it is that if we don't look at developing that area, someone else will do that. Soon as the infrastructure pieces are there to come across the road, which they are moving in that direction currently. They are coming up Jackson School Road to there and it's not a big leap to go over. And Hillsborough has gone over the twenty sixth line previously in other areas. So I think it's a realistic thing to consider. In twenty years, will Sunset Ridge be next to Hillsborough? And so I like the idea of being able to control that environment, think about what that looks like and to make that happen. In terms of the H and A and the O and O H and A, I realize we're under time constraints with them. I like Commissioner Miller brought up the point of, you know, which one looks like us now? Who are we now? Because the community is asking us to, you know, stay small, stay similar. So I like that that the H and A does that and I would probably be in that direction. And that's only in terms of what I learned tonight. And in terms of following the relook recommendation, I feel like that the work is there to do that. But we have, we don't have the step of the planning commission that's taking a look at that relook. And again, I don't want to come in and usurp that process because I feel like that's a really important piece that we heard a lot of really important information from the planning commission tonight and questions as well as of statements and information that, you know, that would be that recommendation coming forward or not. So I would like to hear what that recommendation is from planning. I mean, maybe after tonight, they come through with the recommendation not to be that. I don't know. But I think we should should honor that process and honor our commissions that we have put in place to do the work.
Steve, can I just ask a point of clarification? Because I've heard it a couple of times this evening. It's my understanding that the city of Hillsborough cannot annex any of the undesignedated lands that we are looking at for expansion. Can you confirm or?
Let's ask our DLCD representatives if they can answer that question. Kevin or Laura?
I'll I'll take a shot at this. So the the lands that are surrounding the city of North Plains are are, the term is undesignedated. And that's, it's different from what the jurisdictions in the metro region have surrounding them, which are urban and rural reserves. There are some rural reserves that also are are surrounding North Plains, but directly adjacent to North Plains are those undesignedated lands. In twenty fourteen, the legislature adopted the grand bargain, which includes a provision that requires the metro region to use the the urban reserves first before they touch the undesignedated areas. And those those urban reserves are nowhere near being built out or or being being utilized. So so the this, the scenario would, is nothing that could happen anytime soon. Those 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 urban reserves need to be need to be built out to, I believe, seventy five percent before those undesignedated lands can can be touched. And I would look to maybe Chris Crane to to correct me if I've I've got any of that wrong. That's just off of memory.
Would that be in twenty years or thirty years or or not at all?
So, first of all, Hillsborough's U G B is controlled by Metro and
We're the governor.
And so Metro would have to do the U G B expansion in the direction of North Plains. And I believe if I heard Laura correctly, that the land between that portion of the metro U G B and the undesignedated lands is all designated for, we're as rural reserve. And that cannot be brought inside the U G B for at least fifty years from when it was designated, which was twenty fourteen, I think. Unless, again, the governor of the legislature decides to change the rules. So I I don't think it's, to answer your question, I don't think the city of Hillsborough can, I don't believe Metro can anytime in the near future expand the metrics to include undesignedated areas around, around North Plains.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Well, I want to thank you guys for the constructive dialogue tonight. It was certainly enlightful. I I am taking away some warnings and some things to think about. I walked into this meeting not prepared to make any decisions and I will not as well. But I will be taking away from you guys a lot of information and considerations. I do think that there's definitely a recurring theme when I hear about everybody is kind of what do we what is the definition of growth, growth that we have to align on, right? I do agree, but I heard me councillor Don Brow assumed housing needs. And if, you know, I I would like to maintain the integrity of our town in terms of the composition today. I mean, that small town feel, I think we heard a lot from our residents, that's what we want to maintain. I am also hearing some of our residents saying they want services too. And so that's it. How do we, how do we add the services that people are looking for currently, right? But I'm also thinking too, when we're looking at maps and boundaries, it's easy to stand in front of a map with a sharpie pen that I'm a business person and I like to, I think in terms of what are the financial implications of designating all of these 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 areas on this map and what is, what benefits the city the most economically? And for me, it would also help to see some of the numbers we had as well too. So again, a lot of information to take away and continue thinking about and to 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 really consider moving forward, but I'm happy to also hear that. Twenty twenty six was kind of the timeline that we're working with too, so that makes things a little bit easier.
Thank you.
I feel a lot like councillor Dunwell does with a lot of this information coming in tonight and the farmland and one of my bigger issues is the commercial versus industrial. And we have five hundred acres, I think, zoned industrial, which I think that's where a lot of people got the data center ideas from. If you look up industrial, I mean, that's a big part of it. And really defining that for us before we make some of these decisions. And then with the park, I want to ensure the water rights before we bring it in and then it becomes a dry hole. A big thing that I've kind of discussed with Steve Miller before is controlling the growth and it and it, from that, that email, it didn't sound like we had a lot of control other than infrastructure. If I'm, I was trying to reread that email during the presentation tonight. And so that's, I think, a big concern for a lot of citizens too is yes, this takes time, but Brent Hill was supposed to take five years and it's built out in three. Am I, is that right, Bill?
Well, I mean, I mean, infrastructure is the key thing that city has has to control future development. I mean, if we're not going to put infrastructure in place for something, key connecting infrastructure, they can't do anything. So that's, that's a big part of city leverage. So that's a key part of our control. But as far as like how long it took, I mean, I don't know, I mean, Stewart was around with the original U G B expansion, you know, that brought in Sunset Ridge. But I think if you had, I think if you added up, I wouldn't look at it as three to five years for that project. I mean, once it was fully ready with infrastructure to go, it was three to five years. But we are looking at a process that will take years to get to that five yard line, you know? So.
But then once we get there, it's kind of like off to the races is what it feels like. Once we met, you know.
Yeah, each chunk of land has to get annexed, right? So the Nova is going to determine an annex, all that land over there, one annexation. It's going to be individual property owner coming in and annexing that land. And they're largely going to do it because they got infrastructure available to them, right? So those are going to be the first ones to go, the ones that have the infrastructure immediately around them, that they can extend right into their property, right? So they would be the natural ones to come in first to annex. The other ones are going to be kind of waiting, right? As I indicated earlier, for that infrastructure to be brought closer to their property, so they can pick it up when it abus their property to minimize their costs, right? And so it is a bit of a sequential type of a thing, unless the city were to come in and perhaps facilitate some infrastructure improvements to get to the south end of that area to do some economic development through some state dollars, right? And so again, you're going to see that kind of incremental type of growth as the facilities get to each lot owner and then they would come in and annex. I think you had, you mentioned something about water rights. Water rights run with the land, right? So say the water rights up there for the lake is purchased by a land developer. That property owner has two choices. They could sell their water rights before they sell the land and get rid of it. Or they can sell the land with the water rights and the future owner acquires those water rights, right? It's theirs now, runs with the land.
Even if it's changing from agricultural to
Pardon?
Even if it's changing from agricultural to city park.
Well, again, it runs with the land, right? And so it's there now with the new owner. Depending on what they want to do, can impact how they can utilize those water rights. If they want to continue to farm, they'll be fine, right? If they want to start urbanizing their land, they might have to do something with some of those water rights. They might have to give them up to organize that land. But there could be a, a process where they could sell some water rights back to the city for the park, to irrigate the park and things of that nature. But I guess what I'm trying to get with you is the city would not be buying that land, right? That land would be purchased by a developer. They would develop the park and then donate it back to the city, right? And so that will all happen to an annexation agreement. All those details will be worked out through the annexation agreement on how that process will play out. Who gets the water rights, how that goes, what it's used for, uh, who pays for what, that all comes to the annexation agreement.
Okay. And does the current HNA, when we're comparing the two graphs, include the incoming apartment complex? When we were saying, does the current HNA reflect the new OHNA? Does that include that incoming apartment complex? The green light?
I'm sorry, I think.
Because I feel like that really changes, that's going to be.
It was my understanding that the, that was based on the, the maximum of that, which was forty-eight units. It was twenty-four to forty-eight and they used one of those numbers. So now it's higher, it's fifty-nine, but it's not like a whole new fifty-nine. It's, I think, was already considered because of what it could have been built to.
And so to your point, you know, when you go through, I actually have the, um, some of the HNA here. Um, and it gets into that specific question. And so when it came to Brinhoe in particular, they used the higher number. So they went with the forty-eight units being anticipated for that two acres. And so the total buildout, if they were to do that, would have been five hundred and nine dwelling units. And, um, and Brinhoe is actually a little bit higher, as Chair King indicated, because it went from forty-eight to fifty-nine.
The HNA looks at the zoning and the capacity of that zoning as opposed to like specific developments.
So to, to be clear, the HNA then anticipated forty-eight units. It ended up being fifty-nine, so the discrepancy is only twelve units. So by and large, the HNA does account for the greenland price.
Yes.
And then when in asking these three questions, what would those three questions look like if you were doing a smaller UGB process? Isn't there one for a, a smaller UGB?
A, a different process?
Yeah, isn't there one for?
Kevin or Laura?
There's a, um, there's a threshold for UGB reviews, so it's, um, it's fifty acres. So any UGB expansion below fifty acres is reviewed through a different process. Uh, anything over fifty acres is reviewed by the department in the manner of periodic review. So it's a more formal process that decision is automatically reviewed by the department. But I don't think we're talking about a, I don't know, we haven't, I haven't heard a proposal for anything below fifty acres yet. Um, but that's how it would be handled.
That's an interesting notion, incremental. More intentional.
Kevin, to use that, um, to, to use that, to, to do an, an expansion of less than fifty acres, um, would the HNA or the HCA, whichever process the city went down to show that need, if they wanted it to include housing, would that, would that housing need have to be less than fifty acres? Because my understanding is, once you establish your housing need, you'd have to bring in all of that. Is that correct?
That's right, Steve. I mean, there's, there's always the, the theoretical, uh, idea of finding more efficient ways to use existing lands within the current UGB. So a combination of actions in that regard and UGB expansion might accomplish meeting the total housing needs. But I understand we've got thirty-nine acres of developable land remaining in the current UGB. So, you know, I don't know how likely that, that is, but I just have to raise that as another alternative.
What, what's the current acreage on this map, on the relook map? I know we have one sixty-seven that's needed for housing, but with the economics, what is four?
I added it at one point, but I don't have that at my fingertips. If anyone has access to the UGB report, you could add it up because it's in the, the UGB report, there's us.
It's, it's like three or something. So the, the big blue area in the south, southeast, not in south, but in the southeast towards Jackson School, that's about two hundred and eighty-ish acres of blue. The area in the northeast corner, the two parcels, that's around forty acres on the north side of West Union Road. And then south of Highway twenty-six and what's called the south area, um, down Glencoe Road towards Zion Church Road. That's around, that's about thirty buildable acres in there. So, yeah, somewhere around there.
Three one fifty plus one sixty-seven.
Yeah, I have four thirty-five because I have the residential at about twenty percent of the total.
So it's thirty, four thirty-five compared to the original seven fifty-five?
That's a rough estimate.
That'd be original eight sixty-seven. Yeah.
Any, anything else to add, councillor?
Uh, no, just I, I really, I mean, going last, I really resonated with councillor Don Brow's.
It's ten after eight. I want to give, uh, planning commissioners a opportunity per councillor Pippin's proposal. If we have any reactions or, or comments or final comments, um, before I hand it back to, to Chair King to. Yeah, do what you will with the, the remainder of the work session. So any commissioners have any comments?
Those questions.
Oh, that's okay. I think they, they can just respond to what they heard.
Well, my major recommendation, being a two-year resident here, I grew up in LA, so I see, I know the chaos. And the fortunate thing that this town has is that we have experience where that's gone through it. More, this is what you want when you want to plan out stuff like this. I work for a consulting firm. I know how hectic it gets. People get their spear. But when you have the right people to plan, that's the best thing that you, you can have in the town. And I'm fully supportive of the relook. I understand that people see a boundary in the colors, but it's twenty years from now. This is a perfect time to plan this.
Thank you.
As far as the kind of the questions, I mean, I'll skip around a little bit. Um, I think the east expansion possibility is more critical than maybe north. But, um, because I want to, you know, we have a housing development out there that's just hanging there, you know? And it'd be nice to connect the city to it. Uh, there's a reason it's there. It's because the farmer in between didn't want to come in the last UGB expansion. So that's why they steep frogged out there. Uh, I know the city has done other urban growth expansions before the last one. Not this last one, but the first one I was on, because they were smaller than, I think, than fifty. Because that's how the industrial wing came in and also how we crossed over North Avenue. Because that was annexed in without a full UGB expansion. The housing needs analysis was not just a guess. We did a lot of work on it. I spent a lot of time on it. Uh, hashed it over a lot. It's based on population forecasts from Portland State. If you don't want to believe their population forecast, that's, that's fine, you know? Uh, we don't, you know, we can look at our housing needs analysis and say, well, maybe we're way too aggressive, you know? So let's look at maybe modifying that some, you know? But I, I think it's sad if we all of a sudden say we don't need any more housing. Uh, not fair to our kids, you know? People would want to be a part of this community, but you know, if you want to stay the way you are, you might be sorry you did it. Then as far as the relook, uh, you know, they put a lot of work in it. It's, it's a great job. Who knows if it's the right thing? Uh, you know, I have concerns about the reservoir, I have, because it's an earth and dam. I know it gets checked, but you know, uh, there's definitely concerns there. Maybe we don't do a park there, but you know, I do agree, we need a park. Funding it is, you know, taking care of it is, is, is an expense. But I think it's something that the citizens deserve. A park area, the Jesse Maze is obviously way too small for a lot of things. So, uh, I think it would be nice to have a gathering place like that. You know, if we did something along McHale Creek where some of the land was in the hundred-year floodplain, but didn't have structures and that kind of thing, you have open fields, you know, with, for instance, soccer, things that just get picked up and moved. You know, they don't have to be permanent structures. So I think that's a possibility for a park system. As I mentioned before, the connectivity, you know, of bringing, uh, water systems to have loop systems so that if there's failure in one main line, there's another main line that, uh, will take care of that. Because, you know, now we have our main reservoir on the other side of Mackay Creek. And so it would be nice to have some assurances, uh, for safety, fire and those kind of things. Um, transportation, if there's an accident on the bridge on West Union, you're going to Sunset Highway or you're going way up around the hill on Jackson School Road. So it's nice to consider those kind of things. I know that's an expensive deal. Too bad it wasn't done way back when, when it was easier to do. But, you know, the city planned it and it, you know, was drawn there and then stopped. Uh, we have the same issue with Cottage Street, Cottage Street that about three nineteen. Would have been nice if that was connected because then we'd have another main street going all the way through. So thanks to me for putting in three hundred and twenty-second because now you can go down Pacific, down three twenty-second over to Cottage and out to Gordon Road, you know? So other than coming down Commercial Street. But, uh, so I think there's, we need to consider growth. Like I said, maybe we don't need to consider as much as proposed on this. But I do think we need to consider it as far as rack recommendations. I think, uh, this is a city council decision because, you know, the rack would, recommendations were done for city council. Wasn't done for the planning commission per se, but we take directions from the city council. Uh, I think now that they have a proposal, it might be something that the planning commission could look at and say, you know, if you want to give it, you know, the blessing for us to look at it and come up with maybe some ideas to tweak it. As Commissioner Levante had mentioned, then I, we'd be glad to do that, but that's kind of my opinion.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, so, um, as a planner, I, obviously, I, I believe strongly that we have to plan for the future. And, um, you know, I have children and I know a lot of you do as well. It would be lovely if they could live in our, in our general vicinity. In order to do that, we're going to have to have more housing. But I do believe we obviously need to do it smart. And, um, you know, looking at the current analysis for everything, a hundred and sixty-seven acres for residential, really like Steve pointed out today, is not really that large. Um, when you look at the scope of the current undesignedated lands around the city itself. So that being said, I would like to stay with our current HNA, um, as far as the housing goes and plan with that going forward so it can look the way we want it to look. And, you know, especially with the, the relook committee map, I, I, I'm a firm believer that going through this already once before that we have the ability to make it a, you know, the best map it can be. And now that the, the relook committee has done their initial work on it, then we can get down to the nitty gritty and actually define that boundary. Whether we reduce it slightly on the economic side or whether we keep it the same or whether we move lands from east to west. Um, I think it would be our opportunity then to look at that closer to see exactly what the city needs as far as a balance between that economic and, and residential.
Uh, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to give a recommendation. I appreciate that. And I also want to know, want, want to make sure everyone knows, I hear, uh, from each of you in, hey, there's extra information we would like along with our recommendation. And that can be anywhere from, but what are the needs, what are the tax consequences like, uh, Dunbrow mentioned, and, and many things. So as we go forward, if we go forward with putting together a recommendation, I'll do my best to try to answer those questions. And I may reach out to you with other questions of, is this, would this be helpful, would this be helpful? So I hear that. I think if I had to make a decision today, I would defer to what the voters did, which said, we want smarter. I would defer to the diverse rack committee that said, out of all these things we looked at, this was the one, and I can't even, like councillor Pippin said, I can't even agree with my wife where to go eat. You got nineteen, eighteen out of nineteen people who agree on what they want their city to look like. That's a major. Like, so I got to put some credence in that. And I think going back to many, several of you that said, hey, the city kind of likes the way the city looks. And therefore that would inform my decision on HNA versus ONA. I would, I would, I would say I would lean towards that. So I would lean towards yes, I would lean towards HNA. And I would lean towards some rec, some version of the recommendation with modifications that are maybe taken into consideration, some of the information you want. Um, and in terms of providing a boundary, um, so that, that would be where I'd land. Thank you so much.
I think my opinion is if we keep the housing needs analysis, we can keep it at eight point four. If we don't keep it and cross it, then the state can mandate what we have to do. And that scares me because in the thirty years I've been in the city, it went from an acre and a half to seventy-five hundred to five thousand. And now we're just shrinking and we're shelling as many houses in a small area. And I don't want to be told what we have to do. So if we keep the housing needs analysis, we determine what we do. And I also think that one, one concern I do have is when the colors were laid out, you were just given basically stickers with twenty acres, forty acres, sixty acres, you know, and you did your best. And, and what I look at is on the east side, it doesn't have to be one continuous development. We can control twenty-five acres here or fifteen acres here and control so we don't have the five hundred and eight houses covered with all of us. But that's up to us. That's how we design it. And I think if it gets to that point, then it, it should be an open between these two groups to come up with what our city is going to look like. Not us, not you, but work together and do it. Because it's the only opportunity we have to make a right, so that's my opinion.
Thank you.
My opinion is that the HNA is a better fit for the city because it looks more like the city today. I appreciate the, the relook process and the diverse people that were looking at it. And that's what I think the current council is all about too, is listening to the people on what they want in their city, what they want their city to look like. I'm not for no growth or really small growth, um, because it's hard to plan the big picture when you create little chunks of pieces. Um, infrastructure is hard, road, water, sewer. Um, I, I think that the, the southeast side is a smart, um, area to focus on right now. I can't do that for the city, opening up opportunities for commercial industrial out there on the six. This is a twenty-year plan and we have to look at that far. It's going to develop in twenty years. What do we want it to look like? We want to be a part of that process and help mold what our plan is and try and keep this close to what it is today. Thank you.
For sure.
I did have one thing I wanted to maybe have the, the decreeing answer is that, one of the things that I had always thought, that it was, especially after going through the last UGB expansion with the east and the north expansions, there were maybe three, five parcels in the whole each expansion area, generally owned mostly by the same person, not all of them. But, and so, you know, can you look, when you decide that you're going to bring in land, can you say, I don't want that forty-acre piece coming in as forty acres, I want it coming in as four, ten-acre pieces? Because when we get, when we get the, I know it may become more expensive, but the thing is you give more opportunities to different developers, because you get the big developers coming in, the Lenars and, and Polygon, and they develop a city for you, you know. And so, so, so can you, when you say, okay, we're going to bring in this land, we're going to bring in a hundred acres, can you say, before it gets annexed in, it has to be broken into smaller pieces?
So two, that's, that's two questions, actually.
I'm sorry.
The first question is, once the UGB line is moved, and now land that was outside is inside, it retains its county zoning and the county retains zoning authority over it.
Right.
Right, it gets assigned FD ten. So it would be zoned by the county FD ten. When it's annexed into the city, you can apply whatever zone you want.
Can I help you a little bit? You know, part of going through that concept planning process would be to adopt a comprehensive plan map and an updated zoning map, right? So you, we would have a two map system. If somebody wanted to come in and annex their land, the preference would be that they annex pursuant to the comprehensive plan map that already has the zoning shown on it, right, for these areas that would be in the UGB boundary, right? And provided they do that, it would be an easy route for them. Because what it would show is, we can facilitate that growth based upon infrastructure, because we already did the analysis for that type of zoning for that land. If they wanted to do a different type of zoning, we might not be so inclined to allow that, we might say no. In terms of how somebody might come in and do a land development, say it's, you know, it's industrial land, and they've got a hundred acres down there in the south part of town in one lot, right? It would behoove them to not divide that into a twenty-acre chunk and a ten-acre chunk and a five-acre chunk and get different sized denominations of land as part of their land development, so they can have different buyers, right, to come in and purchase that land. That would be kind of a industrial, kind of a commercial process, right? We could work with them on that, through the land division process. If somebody comes in and say they get a forty-acre chunk for residential development, one of the things we could potentially do through an annexation process is to let them know that they have to bring in additional developers to bring in a wider range of housing types, right? So you don't just get Polygon houses going all the way down, and you just don't get Lennar homes going all the way down. So when I was working for Polish Homes, and I was in the city of Ben, they begged us to do that. Can you please not have Polish Home, Polish Home Homes on all seventy-five acres? And Polish agreed to that. And Polish brought in other developers and sold off portions of the development to them, so they could bring their housing types in and blend them with the Polish project. So it is possible. And there will probably be the annexation process that, that would be utilized to try and bet that out, and how it would work.
I have a, I, I feel like this is a very stupid question, and I was going to sort of leave it here. So by drawing in a smaller UGB boundary, say the one that we look at over, or whatever was decided, it's my understanding that, that doesn't take away any farmland to create a plan for that area, to, to do zoning, and to do anything within that. That farmland is still that farmland until the decision by the owner to annex it to the city would put it to the city. So it doesn't take, it's not the city that takes away the farms, so to speak. So what happens after twenty years if none of those farmers were to come in? Like, you know, with our UGB, anything? I mean, I, I feel like there's a sense that we're taking away, I, I hear the concern about farmland, because that is what surrounds us now. There is, there is some desire in terms of the small city fitting within that space that we're hearing. But, you know, we're not taking that away in the process necessarily. That is a farmer's choice in a sense.
I mean, it really is, as everybody has shared here, you know, those, those future decisions are private property of our decisions, right? On how they want to utilize their property, and when they might want to sell or annex.
Or never.
Things, right, exactly, whatever. I mean, the, the anticipation is, is if you move land into the urban growth boundary, that it would become attractive enough to want to become urbanized, right? That somebody would move forward to do that effort. But that doesn't mean that all the land's going to get built in twenty years.
So it might just be forty acres.
When I was in the city of Ben, the city of Ben did a twenty-year urban growth boundary back in the eighties, right, the mid-eighties. It took over twenty-five years to build up all the land. So even though it was twenty years' buy, it took over twenty years to build, because we went through recessions, we went through other type of things that, I mean, the eighties weren't the biggest building year, you know, ten-year period in the state, it was pretty quiet. And so it took until about two thousand for the city of Ben to really just blast off, right? The land was sat there and go, and it's done.
So I guess my question is, to the other councillors that brought up that issue, you know, what, what is the worry about the farmland going away? So I had a better understanding, because I, I'm confused by that. And if I said it's kind of a dumb question.
No, I, I get where you're coming from. So the problem is, once you put it in the UGB, it is more attractive for farmers to sell. We still own part of the farmland that my family farms. The problem is, farming is very expensive, farmers don't make a lot of money. So the only way that you make money as a farmer is to go corporate. You, you lease and buy as much land as you can, and so the small farmers get squeezed out. The problem is, once we bring in the UGB, it suddenly goes from, it's farmland pricing like twelve, twelve hundred acre, I don't know. This is not very much, it's next to nothing. All of a sudden, you're going to, you know, a hundred thousand plus per acre, more likely, you know, even higher, these developmental payments. Well, no farmer in their right mind is going to sit there on that, that land for that much money. The problem is, we have a finite amount of farmland, and the farmland in the Long Island Valley is some of the best in the world. So it becomes a challenge of, we're incentivizing somebody to take a short-term view on something to make money, which is capitalism, which is great, except that we're not thinking about fifty, a hundred years out. So that's what, that's the concern, is we are, we as councillors and commissioners are to be steward of, you know, the land and, and of the city. And so to me, that's what, what we have to think about is, are we incentivizing that behavior? Are we incentivizing short-term thinking? And that's not an answer, it's something that we should all wrestle with over the coming weeks as we start to think these things through. It's just something that we, you know, as councillor Pippin often says, we all want to go home and be able to sleep. And we have to think these things through, because these are very long-term and very permanent decisions. Because once you put a house on farmland, it takes hundreds of years to recover. So we just need to be aware of these things, they're risk-free. That's the concern.
Ironically, on that point, a lot of this farm ground was forest ground before it became farm ground. Farmers came in, took down trees, pulled stuff, and you know how long it takes to get a forest back? So three hundred years ago, this was a farm ground, or not very much.
I understood, but we also.
It was nature, it was animals, and now we took that away from them too.
But as we consider population growth, the concern becomes, how are we going to ensure that we are feeding future generations? And again, this is not a, this is not an argument for or against, this is just facts that we should all consider and wrestle with, because these are big decisions that we should wrestle with, in my opinion. They shouldn't be, they should not be easy decisions. That's why we're here having these conversations, because they are hard decisions, and we should, we should, we should struggle with these things, I guess, in my.
Thanks for that. And I would, I would add as a, as a planner, that that's exactly what the statewide planning program does as well, is really, really wrestle with those questions of urbanization versus conservation. So thank you for that. We're after eight-thirty, I'd like to hand it back to Chair King to wrap up, or whatever you think is best.
Well, I do agree that we've spent a lot of time on this, and we've covered a lot of good information. So we look forward to the city council giving us directions as to where to go from there. So with the extended time, I think we'll call it a day and we'll close the public hearing at eight-thirty-four.
Thanks to DFCD and, and ODOT and other folks for attending.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.